We'll call the meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisogik territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogik and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover and a seconder to, oh, before I ask for the mover and a seconder, just so you know that there are a couple of additions to the agenda under planning and environment. I want to have a brief discussion about the short-term rental bylaw. And we will also, under administrative reports, have a brief discussion about the delegations that we have planned for Roma, who can attend and whether there's a possibility of combining a couple of the delegations. In addition, under closed, we, based on the correspondence that we've received on short-term rentals, we do have a legal opinion to help us with our decision-making, so that will be under closed. So could I have a mover and a seconder then to adopt the agenda as amended, Councillors Carter and Fury?
Be it resolved that the January 10th, 2024 Halliburton County Council agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of the meeting of December the 12th and 13th? Councillor McKechnie, Councillor Burton?
Be resolved that the minutes of the December 12th and 13th, 2023 meetings of Halliburton County Council be adopted and circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof?
Yes, we've received from Councillor Dayu on both delegation and the discussion regarding the short-term rental bylaw.
Thank you. Business arising from the previous meeting. We are seeking expressions of interest for the position of Deputy Warden. Councillor Burton?
If I may, Warden, I've certainly put my name forward for Deputy Warden and I'll certainly work hard and assist in any which way and act when called upon.
Thank you. Any other expressions of interest? Councillor Carter?
I will put my name forward also as as I think it's important that we we progress as much as possible over this next term.
Thank you, Councillor Carter. Are there any other expressions of interest for the position of Deputy Warden? So we will, the normal process would be for us at our next regular meeting, I believe, would have a vote on that. However, I would like to ensure that we are all here in person. So what we'll say at this point in time that we'll we'll wait until we're all here in person before we take that vote, if that's in if that's agreeable to everyone. Okay, thank you. Do we have a resolution with respect to that? I'm not sure that we I don't, I'm not sure that we do need one. I just wanted to double check.
Excuse me, I don't believe we need a resolution. We'll make note in the minutes and bring it forward at the proper time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your expressions of interest. Next on the agenda are delegations, and today we have a delegation by Jaclyn Baptiste on the short-term rental or the draft short-term rental bylaw. I believe that Jaclyn is going to be zooming in. Good morning.
Good morning, Councillors and Warden Danielson. It's very nice to see you all.
Go ahead with your delegation or your presentation.
Thank you. I apologize for not being there in person. Mother Nature had different ideas over the last 24 hours. My intention was to see you all in person. But thank you for the opportunity to present my delegation by Zoom. First off, I just would like to say I have long-term roots in Halliburton County. First started coming to the area in 2014 when a family member purchased a cottage and that created the love affair for me with Halliburton County and turned into my own purchase of a cottage property in 2017. So to be able to afford that cottage, I've been renting it through the Airbnb platform, and that's what brings me to making this delegation to you today. I would also just, in the interest of transparency, let you know that I'm a moderator of a Facebook community for a group of Airbnb hosts. The intent of that community is to educate hosts and to help them be responsible hosts. Follow the rules. Ensure that their guests behave responsibly and give them the education they need to be great hosts. So all of that being said, if you could bring up my PowerPoint presentation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to start by setting, hopefully, the common ground between us because I know that the short-term rental bylaw has been a contentious file for all of you, and I don't want to make this delegation any more negative or stressful for any of us. The intent here is to find the common ground so that we can work together. And I found this quote and I thought it was very appropriate. "Good governance requires working toward common ground, and it isn't easy." Next slide, please. So I think some of the areas of common ground that we could agree to would be short-term rentals contribute to the local economy and employment. Short-term rentals have become an essential part of the accommodator landscape in Halliburton County. And, you know, just back of the envelope math says it could be up to 77% of the accommodation units in the county. Short-term rentals should be regulated and short-term rentals should be safe. The municipal accommodation tax represents a revenue opportunity for municipalities, and I know how tight money is, so that's really important one. Homeowners who cause problems, including short-term rentals, should be fined under existing bylaws. And a successful bylaw will be the one that is complied with. With all of the staff, time, and effort that you've put into it and the investment you've made in legal opinions and consultants, you want to make sure that all of that results in a high compliance rate. Next slide, please. So what does hosting contribute to Halliburton? And I just want to do a little myth busting here. So the average Halliburton County host is not an investor or, you know, fat cat. Based on Airbnb's statistics, the average is about $9,000 a year in annual rental income. They rent for less than 50 nights per year. The vast majority of them, about 83%, have one property in operation. Now, we did an informal Facebook poll with our 300-plus community members. 63% of them rent a home that they own. Another 10% of them rent a separate space in a home where they live. So these are not people who own, you know, 15 cottages and are renting them out as a business. And the average host pays income tax and flows through GST for the federal government. When you think about hosting more broadly and the contribution to the local economy and employment, here are some statistics to to think about. If you just estimate based on the number, estimated number of short-term rentals for guests, let's say, and let's say an average of 50 nights, that's over $50 million a year in contribution to the local economy. That's based on Airbnb's statistics that are Canada-specific of a $200 per night, per guest investment outside of their accommodation cost. So that's things like groceries, restaurants, attractions, et cetera. And during the time that short-term rental listings have increased so substantially over the pandemic, it resulted in a 300-plus percent increase in the tourism accommodation unit capacity for Halliburton County. So what this explosion of short-term rentals has done is made Halliburton County a much more accessible destination for people who want to visit it. When you think about local employment, it's difficult to estimate, although Airbnb's statistics say that 30% of hosts employ other people to help them in their hosting. So that could be cleaners, maintenance people, groundskeepers, septic pumpers, et cetera. So that also is a significant contribution. Next slide, please. So we've agreed, or I think we can agree, we want regulated and safe short-term rentals. So when I looked at this and thought about kind of the situation versus the solution, so here are some thoughts for your consideration. The bad apple short-term rental hosts are known by the complaints made against them. I bet in your files, you know exactly who they are. So my solution and suggestion is enforce the existing bylaws. I know that's difficult in an era where it's tough to find bylaw enforcement officers, but we do have existing bylaws for noise, fires, fireworks, septic inspections, et cetera. Next situation, the one-size-fits-all bylaw treats responsible hosts the same as the bad apples. And I can tell you, I'm not one of the bad apples, and I don't like being thought of as one of them. Some of the municipalities that have implemented short-term rental regulations have looked at legal non-conforming grandfathering. And that's something that is not currently reflected, to my knowledge, in the existing bylaw that's being proposed. Older and/or seasonal buildings may not meet the current building codes. We know that this is very likely to be true. So the question is, you know, is the objective here to restrict or to regulate? Because hosts will carry liability insurance, they all do already if they list through Airbnb through a program called AirCover, which provides $1 million US in liability coverage. But because there is an additional insurance requirement in the proposed bylaw, hosts will be insured very heavily. And they will be motivated to protect their guests. Professional hosting platforms build in the checks and balances. So I don't know if any of you have had the experience of booking a trip through Airbnb, but guest reviews penalized hosts for quality and safety issues, and they affect their future bookings. So if a host promotes their property through a platform like Airbnb, they have a built-in incentive to do the right thing and make sure that their guests have a safe and excellent experience. Host's personal information is going to be shared publicly. And I am personally concerned about that as it may put myself, my son, or our property at risk. We know that short-term rentals is a contentious issue, and my privacy and the potential to be scapegoated by people is really concerning to me versus providing the information to the enforcement bodies who need it to be able to regulate the bylaw. So it's another consideration. And what I note in the proposed bylaw is that the demerit points never expire. So there's an, there's no ability or incentive for hosts to reform themselves. So I think we should assume that hosts want to do the right thing and give them the ability to learn and improve. Next slide, please. The municipal accommodation tax is, as I understand it, how we're going to fund the administration of short-term rentals. Now, we know that there are different financial considerations here, but I just wanted to do kind of a math comparison. So I, forgive me. They labeled the first column, "Your optimistic math," and the second column, "My lived experience math." But you'll see some of the numbers are the same. So let's say we have 1,350 short-term rentals in the county. Where we start to really differ is the occupancy rate. Scott's statement in The Highlander a couple of weeks ago said that your math is based on a 65% occupancy. I'm here to tell you, there, to my knowledge, there isn't a short-term rental in the county that's achieving that right now. So there would be less than 50 nights per year in occupancy. Let's assume the average nightly rate is the same, but the annual income per host is dramatically different. So you're thinking that they might be making upwards of $82,000 a year? I'm here to tell you they're making $9,000 or less. The percentage who submit, so the percentage who actually will become licensed and actually be submitting their mat, you're assuming that's going to be about 80% of the short-term rentals. I'm here to tell you that 100% of hosts will not apply for a license or be eligible for one. It's just, it's not realistic to think that 80% is going to be achieved. It's probably more like 25%. And when you cascade that math down through the rest of the chart, the numbers get really different. So $3.6 million a year versus about $122,000 per year. So half of that going to the county, and I assume the other 50% being split more or less equally between the four municipalities. So even if you add in the license fees, and I'm assuming about $500 a listing, I don't think that that's been confirmed yet. The average municipality would be making maybe $57,000 a year between mat and license fees. And when you take into account the fact that you're going to need to hire one of your administrative organization proponents, I'm expecting that this will be a net deficit to each of the municipalities. There's also the intangible of how will Halliburton County taxpayers feel about a US company having their tax dollars being funneled to them? It is, it's an intangible, but it might be a problem. Next slide, please. So how many hosts will comply? You know, this is the question that's always noodling around in the back of my mind. And I ask you as, as councillors, what would you do for $9,000? So there are several hurdles that a host will have to achieve. They have to pay startup costs, and that could be the license fee, they may need to buy their shoreline road allowance, they have to buy insurance, they have to buy signage to put on the outside of their building. They may need to upgrade things like fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, depending on the the models they have. They may need to do significant renovations based on building code. Then they have to pass all their inspections. So they have to pay fees, they have to comply with everything, and they have to be ready to pay fines should something happen during one of their rentals. And you probably know this, but 79% of the applicants failed to pass inspections in tiny township. Then they have to take on the administrative reality of collecting and remitting the mat, annual renewal and inspection, liability for safe operation, and demerit points that never expire. So when you think about all of those hurdles, what do you think the average host who's making $9,000 is going to do? Next slide, please. So what's our ask? We're asking for a phased approach. So we would suggest that we pause the approval and implementation until the tiny township case is heard to avoid potential legal action in Halliburton County. So you could take a phased approach with a year-one registration focus. Register all the short-term rentals, monitor the problem properties, and enforce all the existing bylaws. Next, in year two, you can conduct public consultation on the proposed bylaw. You know, I know that because this file has been worked on for many years now, you believe that their adequate public consultation has already been taken into account. But the draft bylaw has not been publicly consulted on. Different aspects of the bylaw have been. And then you could reconsider cumbersome, expensive, or discriminatory aspects of the bylaw. Things like the shoreline road allowance purchase, applying municipal accommodation tax on short-term rentals only. Things like that. And then you can move on towards implementation, knowing that you're going to get a high compliance rate, which is what everybody wants. Next slide, please. So I, I want to sincerely thank you for listening and also to all of your staff, people who have answered all the questions by email. I know that it's probably a very time-consuming part of their jobs these days, and I sincerely thank you for the opportunity to share these ideas. And I just want to say that responsible hosts want to comply with a fair and equitable bylaw, and I would be pleased to answer your questions.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Do members of council have any questions related to the delegation? Could we have a mover and a seconder to receive the delegation? Councillors Carter, Councillor Rayal?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information delegation and related correspondence from Jaclyn Baptiste regarding the short-term rental bylaw.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks again, Jaclyn. We much appreciate the work that you've done in preparation for your delegation.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is planning and environment. Mr. Stone?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council. A few things I'd like to
Councillor Rayal? Jennifer has a conflict on part of the report.
To continue, a couple of exciting things are happening this month. We received two official plan amendments from the municipality of Darsart, so we've deemed them complete, and they're now in their 30-day comment period, so that's exciting. The other thing, too, that has been long awaited will be our Public Information Center for the floodplain mapping project. That is now scheduled for January 29th from 3:00 to 8:00 at the municipal recreation facility across the river. So Ganaraska Partners, Corey Harris and his team will be presenting to the public in a very tactile environment over, over the course of the evening where people can come in and actually look at mapping, request to see how it affects their property and so on, so forth. We'll be advertising for that Public Information Center next week. So all are welcome, and it should be an exciting time to see the finished product. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
The only question that I've got on the report, and we will be having a brief discussion about short-term rentals, but because it's specifically referenced on your report, is the RFP for service provision for short-term rentals. My question is, if the county was the one who put the RFP out, why that didn't at least come back to us for information rather than being held back and sent directly to the lower tiers?
Good question. I was I was sort of was at, at the sort of disposable of the finance department who was looking after the RFP, but I would be remiss that I might not have known that it should have come back. So that's my apologies.
Mr. CAO?
Thank you. Just in reference to that, I think the rationale behind how it was handled was that because the bylaws were going to be passed by the local municipalities opposed to the county, that's why they were specifically sent to the lower tier. But if the county council would like to see that, we can make arrangements for that to come forward. That's my understanding.
Councillor Fury?
I think it's critical it comes to the county first. At least comes to the county, because the whole idea of this is to get a program that goes forward and all the townships are the same. If it goes helterskelter to the fore and they decide they're going to change it, we're starting all over again. Don't want that to happen.
So I guess it would be appropriate to ask that that be brought forward to our second meeting in January?
We can make the arrangement.
Okay, that'd be great. I'm seeing nodding heads in the room, so we'll move forward with that. Any other questions on Mr. Stone's report? Could I have a mover and a seconder then to receive the report? Councillors McKechnie and Shell?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives a plan report, PLN 012024, entitled Plan Department Update for January 2024 for information.
All in favor? That's carried. So as requested, based on the amount of correspondence that, that we've received over the last month on, on the short-term rental bylaw, I, I wanted to have just a brief discussion to make sure that, that we feel that we're all on the same path. We, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a legal opinion that we'll bring forward during close, but I just wanted to just bring this forward and see if we're, we're all still on the same page with respect to short-term rentals and how we move forward. So any comments with respect to that? Councillor Carter?
Well, we have over 20,000 people in Halliburton County, and we've got about 100 pieces of correspondence, most of which seems to be orchestrated by centrally because they use the same turn of phrase. You can see the same paragraphs in, in, in many of them. So, I mean, we've been working at this for six years or more. You know, it's, it's laughable when people don't think there's been enough public consultation. I mean, we've been dealing with this, talking about this, and and people are saying, well, we never had a chance to to talk to you about it. Well, yeah, you did. So I think
In half of that time, it's been livestreamed.
Absolutely. So I, I think we need to be going at this to get this in place by the spring.
Thank you. Councillor Rayal and Councillor Fury? Then Councillor Shell?
I have a tendency to agree there. The other thing, too, is I think we all said that within a reasonable period of time, which is roughly a year, we would have another look at it to see if any amendments and adjustments needed to be made to it. And, and as long as we're going to do that, we've got that safety hitch in place that for those things that may not necessarily be working the way we thought they would, they can be adjusted at that point in time. Any, any voids that we have missed or duplication that we've come across can also be corrected at that time, too. So I, I, I just think that we're doing this the right way. We're, we're using a fair amount of due diligence as much as we can. And I think we've also put some safety issues in there that within it's not, it's not a, we're going to pass the bylaw and then we put it in the corner and forget about it. I think it's one of those, it's very dynamic, it's very important to the people it represent, and the way we're going to be doing it, especially in the fact that we're going to review it in roughly a year's time to see how it's performing. I, I don't see what the problem is.
Thank you, Councillor Rayal. I know one of the things that I have done in some of the correspondence that I've replied to has been to refer to the fact that it is going to be a living document, that it will be reviewed on a regular basis, and changes will be made if we find that something isn't working or is deemed to be or appears to be unfair. Councillor Fury? You're first.
Can't wait. Anyway, the I could have challenged some of the stats that came out in the earlier presentation, but it's not worthwhile. Like, 9,000 a year. I know people that are renting for 20,000 a month, 10,000 a week. So I don't, you can, you can tear holes in all the stats, but to, to try and make a statement that it's going to be onerous, that people are going to have to meet fire codes and safety codes and and all the other things that septic and, and, and to send bylaw officers out in the middle of the night because there's there's noise, none of us here can do that. We don't have bylaw officers, and I wouldn't send one out alone in one of those situations anyway. So I think our approach is right. It, it was well orchestrated and organized, and there's some good points in, in the presentation, but you know And there's some good points in, in the presentation, but you know what? Um, I think, I think we're way past going back and starting over. It's time we moved on here and, uh, I can tell you right now, there's not one or two complaints. I've been sitting here for a year with this council and every time there was a question about our liability, we sent it off to a legal, professional legal to get opinions so that we're not jeopardizing ourselves. So I, I'm pretty confident that, uh, we should go together and move on.
Thank you. Counsel Shell?
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I would agree with everything that my, uh, previous fellow counselors have said, but you know, some of the, a lot of the people who are in opposition of this keep bringing up the fact that, you know, well, these places, they're not going to meet the code in order to be rentable, you know, maybe they don't have the proper fire extinguishers, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the fact now that those, those renters are admitting that that's a possibility. And now that the county is aware of that, that, that puts a whole new responsibility on us. So by regulating this, in my opinion, is absolutely the safest way for all, anybody who comes here to rent, um, to move forward.
Thank you, Counsel Shell. Any other comments? Counselor Carter?
Just one other point, and I think it's important everybody, because so many of the people in the, in their correspondence have been putting this MAT tax and the S, short term rentals together. These are two separate projects. We happen to be progressing on them at the same time, but the short term rental project is going ahead. No matter what would happen to the MAT tax, you know, the, the fact that we've got them running parallel doesn't mean they're, you know, they're together. They're not the same thing. And we're not using the MAT tax to pay for the short term rental program. You know, the MAT tax is the possibility of us being able to gather money for tourism and, and, uh, and promote the county and so on. So you know, that we have to disavow people of the, the fact that this is, uh, these two things are, are, are linked. They're just coincidentally happening at the same time.
Well, and, and the MAT tax on, on the municipal side of things allows us to, to cover, uh, uh, impacts to our infrastructure based on the additional, uh, visitation. Any other comments? I, I would like to thank Mr. O'Vell, uh, for being the keeper of all of the correspondence and, and having to respond to, uh, to quite a bit of it. So thank you for that. I know it's, uh, it can become a bit overwhelming when, when added to your regular duty. So we're appreciating the efforts that both of you have put into this. I don't believe that we need a resolution for the, uh, for the discussion that we've had. We've just received the information. Uh, so moving on, uh, nothing under forest conservation or shoreline preservation. Uh, so we'll move to public works. And we'll just bring in, um, Counselor Dayu? Okay, um, good morning, Sil. Uh, your first report is your regular status reports.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. Yes, uh, the first report is our standard monthly um, status report. Um, I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has questions on, in regards to the status report.
Are there any questions on the status report? Seeing none, I'm gonna have a mover in a second or two receive it. Counselors Fury and Burton?
Be resolved that the January twenty twenty four status report on capital projects, operations approvals and road maintenance be received for information by council.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the next is your, uh, report on the, um, rail trail community green space project, uh, as a result of the delegation that we had at our last meeting.
Uh, correct, uh, Warden Danielson. Uh, on the thirteenth, uh, council received a delegation from the, uh, Halliburton County Rail Trail Community Partners, uh, proposing a community green space project along the county rail line, our rail trail. Uh, staff believes that the project, uh, would be beneficial to the county rail trail as well as the surrounding area. Uh, staff and the HCR T C P, um, have agreed in principle to, uh, to draft an agreement, uh, that would, uh, basically, um, spell out all the responsibilities, implementation, the maintenance and evaluation of the project moving forward if approved. The first, uh, item of, of business in regards to this would be the submission of a funding application to the TD Friends of the Environment Fund. And, uh, by July, uh, January fifteenth, sorry. Um, the organization have completed the application and upon approval, staff, county staff will submit the application. And once the application is approved, um, staff will, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, HCR T C P will draft the, uh, an agreement and the agreement will be, uh, for, uh, brought back to council for approval. And, um, there are some, there are lots of benefits. Uh, climate change considerations are uh, supportive, uh, supporting biodiversity and the storage of carbon with, uh, all the new plantings and. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Uh, questions on Sil's report? Counsel Furry?
Well, I think it's a good project. I just want to know what the, when it's approved, what role does the county play? Because we've got tricked into these administrative roles before.
Essentially, um, they will be taking care of everything. Um, what, what, what county will do is monitor when they're on sites to make sure that they're working safely and, uh, and also identifying the areas of planting and coordinating with maintenance.
Um, when you say that they will take care of everything, uh, I just want to double check because I'm not quite sure that that's the case. I think that we would be managing the funding, uh, both in and out and, and hopefully that, that would roll out without any challenges. Um, I, I did kind of wonder, you know, in, in the, in your, in your report, you're saying that we would be the ones to submit the application and, and it seemed to me that when the, when we received the delegation, we were given a choice about whether we would actually submit the application or support the application. So, um, I, I see that, you know, there must have been some discussion take place and, and you seem to think that it's appropriate that we submit the application.
Yes, um, discussions with the financial staff, um, they think that it's, it's appropriate for the county to submit the application and it wouldn't be a a, a burden on, on their time as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any members of council? I'm hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or then to, um, receive the report and approve moving forward as recommended? Counselors Dayu and Rayal?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received for information that January tenth, twenty twenty four staff report Halliburton County Rail Trail Community Green Space Project. And that Halliburton County Council direct staff to submit the Community Green Space Project Funding Application to TD Friends, the Environment Fund. And further that Halliburton County Council direct staff to draft an agreement between the county and the Halliburton County Rail Trail Community Partners outlining responsibilities, implementation and maintenance of the project. And finally, that staff bring a copy of the draft agreement to county council for approval.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We look forward to that being a successful project. Uh, next on, uh, the agenda is the, uh, acquisition of a, uh, road allowance, piece of road allowance on County Road nineteen.
Uh, correct, Warden. Um, in two, in June of two thousand nineteen, uh, the Johnsons approached the county in regards to forest road situation where the county did not own the appropriate road allowance through their, uh, property. And they, um, they're the owners of the property on both sides adjacent to the, um, County Road nineteen. Um, they, uh, also agreed to transfer the road allowance to the county, uh, as long as the county assume uh, payment of the survey and, uh, fifty percent of the legal costs. Um, county secured, uh, the services of N O A, O A, O L S, uh, survey company to, um, to survey the, 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 the new corridor and, um, prepare a, a reference plan. Um, this agreement will facilitate the future development of the road and as well as, uh, maintenance service levels. And to update the legal, I received a, a quote on the legal fees, which would be approximately eight hundred and twenty five dollars.
I'm sorry, how much?
Eight hundred and twenty five, uh, to pay for this year and the OLS was paid in twenty three.
And, um, any questions on this report? Um, I, I, I just would comment then on reports like this. For those of us who are a little more visual than others, it might be helpful to just have a copy of the, uh, of the, of the survey or, um, GIS.
Sure. Yep.
Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the report and move forward with the acquisition? Counselors Fury and, uh, Shell?
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information that January tenth, twenty twenty four staff report on the acquisition of road allowance on County Route nineteen and that be recommended that Halliburton County Council that the Cal, County Halliburton entered a land transfer agreement with Mrs. Jane Johnson for the land transfer road allowance on County Route nineteen. And finally, that staff be directed present a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to execute the set agreement and any related documents on behalf of the county.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, uh, your request to put out tenders for hot mix and surface treatment projects for this year.
Uh, yes, staff are recommending release, the release of a request for, propose, uh, request for tender for the hot mix and surface treatment uh, projects for twenty twenty four in advance of, uh, the, uh, capital budget being approved. Uh, staff will review the tenders and respond and return to council for, uh, recommend, for approval and award. And um, I'm to, uh, the staff is anticipating this will probably happen at some, sometime in, in, uh, early to late March. That the, we could come back for, uh, to council with the report.
It might be helpful to have that information before we actually adopt the budget, but we'll see what, how the timing goes. Any questions on that? Uh, could I have a mover in a second or then to move forward with the tendering process? Counsel Burton, Counsel McKechnie?
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information that January tenth, twenty twenty four staff report approval to release a request for tenders for twenty twenty four hot mix and surface treatment projects. And the Halliburton County Council provide approval for staff to proceed with the release of the tenders uh, as part of the twenty twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty four budget allocation.
All in favor? That's carried. I think so. So next we have, uh, administrative reports and the first is the, uh, report on a revised agreement with the city of Gortha Lakes for joint social and housing services. Over to you, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, uh, Warren Danielson. It's, this, this report's brought forward as the amendment of the agreement of the, uh, provision of the, the housing and social services with, with our agreements, the city of Gortha Lakes. Um, this is a bit overdue. It was generally done on a five year cycle, but the COVID, uh, interrupted the regular cycle. So it's coming forward now as opposed to back when it was, it should have come forward in twenty one. Most of the changes to the agreement are minor in nature with respect to administrative things in. And there's some, some clarity on some funding pieces around. There was one was opened ended on child services, which has now been prescribed to a percentage of administrative costs, which is, I think is better for us in, in the administration of the agreement. Um, so it's, it's a relatively straightforward, uh, amendment to the agreement or new agreement for the services provided. Um, I would also, uh, the counselors Carter and, and Dayu are members that represent the county on that committee if they have any comments on, on the proceeding as well, because the bulk of the negotiation is done by Mr. Rutter, uh, and, and the members are representatives on the committee.
And I see there are, there are relatively minor changes. Uh, comments from either Counselors Carter or Dayu? Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I think the, um, you know, this is a, this is a committee that, um, has not necessarily worked um, well in the past, hasn't accomplished a lot, but I think that the, uh, this, this year's, uh, version of the committee has people that are, uh, that are very much interested um, in what is going on and, uh, at, in both, uh, the city and in the county. And, um, you know, I think that the, there's, uh, there's, there, there's an awful lot going on in this area and it, all of it is, uh, right now, a bit difficult. There's a shortage of housing, um, and housing is a big part of it. There's a, there's a a shortage of childcare spaces and childcare is, uh, is part of all this. And there's a, a shortage of, uh, you know, support people and professionals in, in a lot of the other areas of social services in the, in the county and in the city. And, uh, you know, everybody is, I think, working together to try to make this better. And, uh, I think that, uh, everybody involved has been, uh, has been, you know, cooperating well. And, uh, you know, I think that, you know, we're paying our fair share. Uh, we, if we were doing this on our own, we would not be able to have the, um, services and the, and the quality of people that, you know, that, uh, the city has. And so the fact that we can pay a portion of somebody, uh, like that is, is very helpful to us. So and as we see, this is, these are very minor charges and changes. And, uh, you know, I think we should, uh, we should, we should jump at it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for that. And I'm really pleased to hear you say that, that there's, uh, been some really positive changes in the working relationship and, uh, um, because I know in, in the past, there were some challenges and I, I, I believe that council at times even felt shut out from decision making. So it's, it's really good to hear that there is positive changes taking place. Any other questions or comments? Could I have, uh, Counsel Rayal?
Yeah, well, I, I also, I'm, I'm part of that group and the, the amount of deep diving that's been done in the last little while to get to the, to the basic identifying the, the, the critical issues and also trying to get down to what can be done about it. Obviously, things can and others can't be done. And, and one of the things that, that I can, and I think Counselor Carter already mentioned it was the county is getting full awareness and recommend, and, and recognition by the group. So, um, I, I, I think it's, it's really a positive thing for us and, uh, and it's something that we should probably stay involved with. I, I don't see any option that we're going to produce any better results.
Thank you, sir. Uh, then could I have a mover in a second or to, uh, approve or adopt the amended agreement? Uh, Counselors Carter and Rayal?
Be resolved that county council approved the revised joint social and housing services agreement with the city of Gortha Lakes and further that a bylaw be prepared to authorize execution of the agreement.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the, uh, renewal of employee benefits for two thousand and twenty four. And Tanya Rosenberg will be making that report today. Good morning.
Good morning, Warden, members of council. Uh, staff recently received the county's annual benefit renewal proposal. Uh, the proposal included no rate changes for life, dependent life, accidental death and dismemberment or the assist, employee assistance program. The long-term disability rate actually decreased by two point nine percent, which is a direct result of the county's ongoing efforts to provide a diligent, early and safe return to work program. The county has experienced renewal rate increases for vision, drugs, dental, extended healthcare, resulting in a final renewal rate increase of three point nine percent to our overall benefit premium.
Questions or comments from members of council? I'm hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or to, uh, receive and approve the, uh, report? Counselors McKechnie and Fury, thank you.
Be it resolved that staff report on the twenty twenty four renewal of employee benefits you received and that the employee benefit renewal proposed by K Brewer Financial Services effective February first, twenty twenty four be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. That's carried. Um and finally, uh the uh, thanks very much, Tanya. Um as a one of the additions to the agenda, I did want to have a brief discussion um on the delegations that we have lined up, um who's going to be available for them. And and I I also wondered about the possibility of consolidating or 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 possibly cancelling one of the delegations, given that it is for the basically the same topic. It looks to me like um and I'll I'll turn the discussion over to you, but the uh acquisition of Crown Land is going to both uh Infrastructure Ontario and um municipal affairs and housing. And and I just kind of wonder about that duplication, and if if in fact we need to go through Infrastructure Ontario, do we need to present to uh municipal affairs? So I just thought it would be helpful for us to have a conversation about that. Uh we also would need to know who's available for those del- for actually, in particular, the Sunday morning delegation, um and whether anybody needs uh additional rooms available as well. So um you might want to add to that. Gary?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so when we submitted our applications for the delegation report, the province took it upon themselves to split our delegation. Um because the portfolio of real estate change at the province where it is now to infrastructure took where IO used to have real estate, now real estate's gone over to infrastructure. Excuse me. Um so that's been because we didn't have a specific project in mind, MMA passed it off to infrastructure and which was fine. Um and then they came back and they gave us delegation for MMA, and I didn't know what it was for, and that's the one on the, I think that's the Tuesday, the Tuesday delegation, I think it is. Um and so it's just, we don't have information specific around it. We could create one if if council wants to take the opportunity of having that window, we could deal one around, you know, housing or access to housing or whatever the case may be directly for that. Um but the the real estate piece on the land is specifically going to infrastructure, and I don't mind it being there because we want to talk process, because we beyond just the the act, the use of land for housing, we're also talking about other land issues with Crown Lands that that council went to before AMO before um that hasn't been resolved yet. So I think we can, we can accommodate all three, and we can make it worth our while. But I just wanted to bring it to council's attention that that they split it, they split them on us um based on their their understanding of our application.
So seeking comments and input on uh on that, and and who's available or or not available to attend. Um Counselor Real, then Counselor Dayu?
Yeah, I I'm not, I'm going to show my ignorance here because I have no idea of of the total scope of each of the two ministries that we have dealt with. So I'm wondering whether or not we may or may not be presenting the same information to two different audiences. Are the two different audiences responsible for different resource allocations that we could get benefit from? Because if the answer to that is yes, then it makes sense to keep it as two delegations, whereas if we're going to end up pooling it into the same, then I would have the tendency to agree that it may be redundant. So I I guess if 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 we speak with two different ministries about similar things, are we talking to two different resource pools?
Well, and it's interesting to note that the previous delegation was made was made to um M and RF. Um and 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 you know, they agreed to take action on it, although there has has not been action on their part. Um and but in fact, if we're acquiring Crown Land, it has to be done through Infrastructure Ontario. Um Counselor Dayu?
Yeah, to fully take on board um Counselor Real's points, my sense would be this is an opportunity to spread our message wide, and and if we do have two fifteen-minute slots, then so long as it isn't an uh too much of a burden to ask staff to create two separate briefs, um why not um why not go to both and and just get our word out there? Um and as for participation, I am available on Sunday, I'm sorry, on, yes, on the twenty-first and on the twenty-third. Um um but the but the twenty-second um not, oh, hold on, I I'm going to circle back. Let me, I'm going to revert to my calendar there and circle circle back, hold on. Twenty-first, twenty-second. No, I'm available for all three. Apologies.
Counselor Carter, then Counselor Real?
Assuming.
Don't talk rotter taxes. She's a poundling.
Gosh.
Oh.
I can't turn it off.
You can turn down the volume.
I can. That was bizarre. I have no idea where that came from. Um I'm sorry, Counselor Carter.
Um look, I think if we have the opportunity to have three delegations, we could take them. Um you know, I think it's difficult for us to really understand exactly how the the uh the provincial government works, um you know, in particularly in in this area. But I think that there's slightly different slant that we can take to uh both the Infrastructure Ontario and to the uh and to the municipal affairs and housing. Uh there's a couple of uh couple of things that we might be able to address a little bit differently there. Um and assuming that I'm not in a homeless encampment overnight, I will be able to make it there on Sunday morning and to the other two.
Um go ahead.
Thank you. Just to just to add to Counselor Carter's comments. Um yeah, so the the intention is we do have a way we can split it up because the ask is actually, one is very technical in nature with respect to um the process by which the province sells their land. It's a very archaic, long-drawn-out process where they have to make it available to all the ministries first, and that can take well over a year for them to respond back whether they have use for surplus lands of nature, and then how they and then how they go forward with it. What we'd be looking at doing, and Mr. Robell's actually helping me put the briefing together, is that we're looking at asking to modify their program to mirror that of the federal government. The federal government through through their um their housing strategy created a a process by which it eased or simplified the process of the transfer of land to municipalities, provided they were doing certain things with it regarding community benefit items. And that gets rid of the 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 higher levels of bureaucracy, and it also reduces the cost from a market value piece into affordability piece to municipalities that can, so they're not paying millions of dollars for a piece of land that's being used for for affordable housing purposes or or some other community benefit, and that's a message we can split between both MMH and also uh infra- infrastructure, I mean, sorry, in ministry of infrastructure, I think so. It can be done, and I think there, the more we think about, there is a benefit to to ta- saying the message twice.
Uh Counselor Real?
I just wanted to say I'm available for all three as well. Um the big, the only big challenge is this is the one on Sunday morning, uh getting in there in time to get there for nine-thirty if I'm leaving from from Good Room.
Thank you. Uh I I see someone may have a comment to make with respect to this. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Warden Danielson. I'm pleased to advise that uh staff have been working this morning and all members of council who have requested additional night stay. That has been now added to your room, so that helps in the planning. Um everyone has a room for Saturday night. Thank you.
Well done. That's not always an easy thing to do. Um okay, so I would ask anyone who's got comments uh to contact Gary as soon as possible, because I mean, you know, we we've got a limited window within which to prepare the briefs and submit them to the ministries, the appropriate ministries. Um uh keeping in mind that it is Gary that is going to be preparing the briefs, not us as individual members of council. Um also, I I would like some input on our precisely what our approach should be with the Ministry of Health and and what our ask is, and and I would I would go to you, Counselor Carter, because I think you were the one who initially made that request for that particular delegation.
Yeah, I, you know.
I'm surprised that they gave us the delegation, to tell you the truth, because it seemed to me that there's going to be a lot of people saying the same thing.
Yeah, I I think the uh the situation uh you know, across the provinces is gotten worse.
Mm-hmm.
Um uh and there are no easy fixes. Uh you know, right now, here, um this urgent care clinic um that is that opened in Minden. On some days, if you go in there at eleven o'clock, you're turned away because they're fully, they're they've got enough people already in the waiting room for the rest of the day. On the weekend, I think there were twenty-eight people in a merge in Halliburton. They were treating people in the waiting room. Um you know, our situation is not, is not, is not getting better. Um it's a, and you know, I'm not suggesting that ours is different than a lot of other locations, so you're right. What they're going to get, uh you know, look, I I I, one of the things that that I wonder is, you know, I I go back to the fact that you know, it does cost you about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year to go to medical school, but that only pays a portion of what it costs to train a doctor. Um you know, it's probably more like a hundred thousand dollars a year. So the government is is investing money in training of doctors. Is it possible that they could look at the idea of saying you must you must work in an underserviced area for a period of time, five years or whatever? This, they had this in the past, and it it failed um for lots of reasons, but I think that it's, we're now in the situation where this is not normal anymore. You know, we are at a, we are at a crisis. We whole number of doctors have been coming through town over the last little while doing locums and and so on and so forth. And I've talked to a number of them. They're not interested in coming here. You know, they're they're twenty-eight years old and they uh they're, you know, they they want to be in a place that's that's got a potential to actually find a partner or to, you know, experience a lot of things in life. Um it's it's really difficult for us to get somebody, and and we're, we're not the, we're not the far north. You know, but we are a rural area, and uh this is very difficult, so you know, some, just some different ways of thinking. I that, you know, we're not going to be able to go to the, to the, to the Ministry of Health and say solve this, fix this, get more nurses, get more doctors, even if you trained more doctors, it's it's six-plus years before they're available. You know, the, but there are other things that can be done that may be um that may be worthwhile. The the idea of the the idea of the things like we have where we we give money to doctors, uh if they will come here, they get an extra allowance or something like that. At the end of the day, and then and look, I'm not going to suggest that doctors are are underpaid in any way, shape, or form, but giving somebody an extra twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or whatever the number is, you know, after taxes, that's twelve thousand. And the the fact is, is that they can more than make up for that and work an awful lot less hard if they were in Markham than if they were in Minden. So you know, like, the, you know, unless the government puts in some mandatory thing, I think it's going to be very difficult for us to reverse this situation.
I really like the idea of 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 asking them to consider the reinstitution of of requiring any doctors who've been supported by government funding to work in rural communities for a period of time. I know that there are other agencies within the provincial government that do that. The OPP does that. Um you know, I I think that's an excellent point to make. Uh we we have also received uh, I I had my uh initial orientation with the hospital board, um which was substantial, I I must say. Um but one of the things that I did mention, uh we just reminded uh uh the the CEO that we were going to be going to uh to Roma, that we had a delegation and asked if they wanted to provide input. And she has given us a a one-pager, um which we can provide to, you know, all of you to have a look at. Uh but the one additional thing that she said was that, you know, we we need to stress the need for support in in areas for things like transportation, which I found really interesting, that that was that that was an issue that they wanted brought forward, that housing is also a challenge and uh in particular, and we, I mean, we know that, but those are things that we can uh, we can emphasize again. Um she, I I I found it interesting that she also suggested the need for a a a rather grander uh community center and swimming pool, which I thought, well, okay, I mean, that's I get it that the doctors would like to have a pool, but I mean, that's far beyond our capabilities, given the other uh um priorities that we've got in place right now. I mean, we'd all love to have a pool. There's no question about it, but the idea of of transportation and housing, sorry, Dave. Well, so any other thoughts that anyone's got about our our delegation to the Ministry of Health? Well, Counselor Fury, then uh Counselor Dayu, then Counselor Real?
I think we need to, uh, when we're talking about doctors, we need to talk about nurses too.
Sure.
Like, these contract nurses are making a hundred and some bucks an hour. How, why, they're working alongside somebody making forty-some. Like, that's, they have to stop that somehow.
Well, I believe that there are some of our our nurses that are that are
Well, they, for sure, why not?
Staff are moving over to contract because they know they can make money.
Yeah, exactly. So that's the big issue. And uh I think they need to look at some of the other countries like Sweden, who had this kind of a problem and got out of it by a different method of providing service. They did a a, they fund some private things the same as they would in the hospital. So private enterprise picked up the slack. So I think that's going to be a a mind boggler for people, but we have to do something. We're in a, like Bob says, we're in a, we're in a crisis here.
Mm-hmm.
And uh but I I think, I think the it's a mess when somebody can make twice as much working alongside you uh that that you do for doing the same job. That's not going to, that can't persist.
Uh Counselor Dayu?
Thank you. Um I like uh Counselor Carter's recommendation. What gives me pause, and there may not be an answer here, is is the equity of the thing. In if we are suggesting that those who have received state funding um are um obligated to work in a lesser serviced area, does that mean the folks who already have family money can get a fast track to the more desirable positions from their perspective? And and I think that probably is a question that that um follows each of these kinds of mechanisms across all all uh industry levels and and all um uh ministries, but I wonder, is there anything there that that we could say about that?
Uh I see Counselor Kirkner shaking his head, and and I think our CAO may have a comment as well, which I'll I'll go to Gary first and then over to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. This is also goes back to the support of the comments Counselor Carter made with respect to the incentivization of of doctor recruitment in the province. It's become a problem, and it's kind of goes back to to Counselor Day's question, is it does create an inequity amongst municipalities. It goes back to the same premise the province has regarding it's illegal to bonus industry to come to your minute, to your municipality, but you could bonus a doctor to come to your municipality. Where one can, there are going to be said from a social demographic standpoint, the impact of the doctor can actually be as great, if not greater, than than the industry coming to your town. And so part of the ask we're putting forward to the to the province has been to address this inequity. The incentivization is solely being placed at the at the burden of the local municipality or at this level of the county uh going forward, where they should play a much more active role in that piece to support the rural and remote communities. The far north has programs that we don't have access to, just because they don't consider us to be remote enough. But if you look at the definition of remote done in all their studies, we do meet the definition of remote because of our distance. We're under thirty thousand population and our distance to a municipality with a population of thirty thousand or greater. So we meet the definition, but they don't treat us as such, right? And so how do we address that going forward? The programs they ran in the early seventies regarding bringing doctors into North Ontario were very successful. Um they stopped doing them. There are, there is pushback from the medical community itself, the physicians' organization, that they don't want those policies in place for everybody can figure out the reasons why. Um but I grew up in North Bay, and and people I went to school with, their parents came to North Bay because of the programs incentivized the doctors going to into North Bay. So what, it did work, and so that's kind of the ask. I think it's probably, and that was our ask to them, was it was talked about incentivization piece. And I think that is what the hook that actually got us delegations, we're just weren't just talking the same old concerns, not diminishing them at all, but it it gives us an opportunity to now talk about that piece, but bring in the other obstacles we're facing as a result of the decisions the province is making that's resulted in the underservicing of our communities on the medical side of things.
Good, good approach. Uh Counselor Carter?
Yeah, so everybody gets government funding from the perspective of, if you're only paying twenty-five thousand dollars a year for your tuition, and it costs a hundred thousand dollars to provide the service, well, then you are getting the the, you know, the benefit. So everybody is uh is is involved in this. It's not only people that are getting direct funding. And and the one other important thing that's really important in the rural areas is the age of the population. And the one other important thing that's really important in the rural areas is the age of the population. You know, we lose so many of our young people to big cities and so on and so forth. And we have so many people in our case who come here to retire. You know, our average age or median age is, you know, now well over sixty. And that's, you know, compared to a Markham where it may be forty-two. And the need for doctors and medical services is that much greater. And, you know, lots of people have all sorts of issues and have to see all sorts of specialists, none of whom are available to us. So everybody's traveling to the specialists and that makes it more complex. And, you know, much harder for the doctors that are local to orchestrate it and keep it all under control. And, you know, they're like traffic cops sometimes. And so, you know, I think it's really important that doctors and, and they have what's called a rurality index. And that determines whether you're, you know, you're rural, not the, the north, anything over, above Highway sixty gets special, all sorts of special pockets of funding that, you know, that we don't get. But the, but the thing is, is that the work that a doctor does here compared to what a doctor does in the city is much more difficult. Many more hours and, uh, and, and much more complicated. So, you know, we need more, we need, and I, I'm using doctors only because it's, they're sort of the top of the food chain, but it goes down to, through the nurses and, and, and so on. You know, we need, we need everything. And, uh, the only way we're gonna get it is for them to organize it a little bit differently. Doctors will fight it like hell, but you know, we're, we're beyond, we're beyond the, you know, business as usual. I mean, this is critical.
Any other comments, uh, about the health delegation? I'm sorry, councillor Royal?
Yeah, I think councillor Carter and other people have said the same thing. We're, we're looking at more than just doctors. We need nurses, we need highly skilled medical staff with various types and descriptions, technologists. Um, getting homegrown is kind of a tough thing to do because you've only got a limited number of people to work with. Is, is in this delegation, does it make sense to look at possibly uh, encouraging immigrants coming to Canada, specifically wanting to come to Canada? Who have those technical skills, may not necessarily meet Canadian requirements. Obviously that would have to be dealt with as a separate issue. But looking at it in the same thought pattern, uh, if you wanna come to Ontario and you wanna get a really good deal, can you come to rural Ontario where we need the people? We just need them and they need to be here. So I'm not sure if that's in the same context, but it does relate to medical staff and, uh, and another option to get them.
There is some work being done on, on bringing in, uh, doctors from other countries, but I think right now they're sort of concentrating on places like the UK and Australia and, uh, particularly Ireland. Um, and, and I know that there's been quite a bit of discussion about, uh, about certification of doctors from other countries, but I'm not sure how far along they're going. But I, I don't know why we couldn't add that or add some encouragement with respect to that. Any, any thoughts on that councillor Carter?
Well, I think it's great that, you know, I, there's only four countries, I think, that, that they right now have approved that they can come in and, and be accredited right away, like the US, Australia, UK, and I think it's Ireland. And the, uh, but the point is, is that when these people come in, they wanna go to Toronto. Or they wanna go to, you know, Calgary or Edmonton or wherever. And so we have the, we're, you know, we remain this, uh, this, uh, area that's got, uh, got some problems.
Councillor Royal?
And I totally agree with that. I guess, being part of it, is there any way we can convince the province to put an incentive for them to come into rural Ontario? Uh, because at the end of the day, if they got the same cost of living and they're trying to get into Canada to start with, um, and, and we can give them two, three, five years of, 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 of a potential assistance in coming to rural Ontario, would, would that not be an incentive? I mean, it's not gonna be applicable to a lot of people, but there may be some who would be interested. And if we can get one to come to, to Helberton County, that would be awesome.
Any other comments? And while we're on the subject of, of, um, physicians, I just wanted to make sure, I'm not sure that if you all received a copy of an email from our recruiter about a doctor who will be visiting next week and, uh, you know, there are opportunities to meet with that, uh, doctor and his wife and, uh, and provide some encouragement, uh, wherever possible. So just sort of keep the dates in mind, they are, they are next week and I'm not sure if everybody's available. But if you have an opportunity to meet them, that would be great. Um, back to the delegations, uh, any, any other comments about delegation material? I look forward to hearing, seeing your briefs. So that's, that's just for information. Uh, there is no other business. So I, I think what we might do is take a fifteen-minute break and move into our closed session discussion. After that. Should we go into close now and take a break or take a break first and then break first? Okay. Uh, we will re-adjourn at ten-thirty. Okay, we will re-adjourn at 10:30. Oh, okay, sorry. Hey, welcome back to the open session. I, we have next on the agenda, the bylaws. First is a bylaw to assume land. So could I have a mover and a second or for that bylaw? Counselor Carter, Counselor Shell?
We still can't hear anything.
Be resolved that bylaw 4222 being a bylaw to authorize the assumption of lands acquired for the purpose of widening of a highway in the county's road system be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal of the corporation fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Next, could I have a mover and a second or to execute an agreement with the City of Thorpe Lakes for delivery of social and housing services? Counselors Carter and Burton?
Be it resolved that bylaw 4223 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between the corporation and the City of Coors Lakes and the county Halliburton be delivered for the delivery of social and housing services be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal of the corporation affixed.
All in favor? It's carried. Is there any notice of motions? Hearing none, could I have a mover and a second or for the confirming bylaw? Counselors Ferry and Ryle?
Be resolved that bylaw 4224 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of January 10th, 2024 meeting a county council be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal fixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, could I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor McPeck being seconded by Counselor Ryle.
Be resolved that January 10th meeting a county council adjourn at 12:42.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Lisa.
Thanks, everyone.